Good evening and welcome to our, to our first discussion about our upcoming budget for next school year. This is the first conversation that staff will be having with the board about what we see as the priorities to include in the budget for the upcoming year. And we can also tonight start to talk a little bit about some of the tough decisions that will need to be made based on the funding that we receive from the state and the local government. We also have a regular board meeting on January 10th. At that point, we'll have a discussion of our proposed budget. And then on January 31st, we'll have a budget hearing followed by a work session. So again, this is the first public discussion about the budget for next year, but it certainly won't be the last. You'll also see in this budget proposal, some recommendations based on blueprint mandates. One thing I'll point out is, and I think we said this publicly at our last meeting, we have received some information from the state that we'll, we'll have a bit of a longer runway in order to be able to manage the compensatory education portion of our blueprint requirements. And that will mean that for next school year, we won't be looking to rearrange too many of our staff between one school and another, which I know is a relief to, to all of our employees. And it will be a message that I'll be getting out in more of a formal fashion to everyone. This budget also prioritizes getting the blueprint mandate of getting all of our teachers to a starting salary of $60,000. And you'll see that, you'll see that listed as well as one of our priorities. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. O'Neil. Mr. Burke is homesick today, so we have an empty seat here, but we've got John to, to take us through the presentation. And we also have Drew Sexton sitting back there who, who will, who will help us out if, if need be.
Thank you, Dr. McCabe. That's right. Thank you, and I just wanted to piggyback on what you said. This work reflects Mr. Burke and Mr. Sexton and Mr. Cannon and other folks in their office effort. And so I appreciate everything that, that they contributed and committed leading up to this. And we definitely don't want Mr. Burke here with us tonight, though. So we're going to approach this work session as we have in the past. And you know, as Dr. McCabe said, we, we know that we have a bit of, a bit of flexibility or reasonableness, which is what we were hoping for. And so we're going to present the budget and its components the way we have. And just the reminder upfront that also this year, we will have to, as an exercise of the state, ultimately present the budget the way we historically have presented it and is still required in law with the major categories. And that's how we're working tonight. But we will have to produce a school system and system by system budgets for FY '25 that align with the funding areas of the blueprint as well. So there'll be more to talk about in January and February as, as far as that goes. A look at what we, at this early stage, are sort of suggesting revenue, new revenue, additional revenue might be for FY '25, showing it as a change from the current fiscal year. We expect about $7 to $8 million in new state revenue. If that number seems a little small compared to say last year or fiscal '23, it is. And there's, it's always more complicated than just one explanation. But one component that's really a driver there is that in the 10-year window of the blueprint, where the numbers of per pupil funding are sort of defined in the law, the, the gap or the, the jump forward, the movement upward from '24 to '25 is the smallest increase in that 10-year window. So it's a bit of a smaller increase than we saw the last two years. And it's a smaller increase than we'll see in the future years of the blueprint.
John, before you move off of that, was, was that deliberate? That, that minor increase from '24 to '25 versus the, the future years progressing?
Yes.
Okay.
And it's, it's complicated in ways that I'm not sure I could fully explain. And if you were to look at sort of the derivations, the percentages for special populations, some of them go way up and then come way down. I think the simplest explanation I can offer, which again is never fair to the, to the bigger picture, is that I, I think there was a feeling that there would be this, this massive infusion of money in the first couple of years. And there were two phase-in years even before the formula took root. And then things start to adjust over time. Why specifically that, that given year is the smallest one, I, I do wonder about, but it's in the law. You know, when you look at some of the, some of the heavy lifts fiscally in the blueprint, they come in '25 and '26. And so to me, it doesn't align well, but it clearly was deliberate. And you kind of would have to comb through the Kerwin Commission report to try to, to develop a broader understanding of the rationale there.
Okay, that's what I was trying to understand because we know that that's, those are the years that, that's the biggest year of the slug of the changes. So trying to understand, okay, why, were they trying to back into a number? Or were they limited to a certain number from a budgeting perspective? Or, okay, I, I appreciate that, okay.
Right. And there's, there's a lot of things that could be debated there. You know, at this point, those are the numbers they wrote into the law. So it's what we're working with. The good news is the horizon gets better. So as soon as '26, that, that number in the base per pupil increases at kind of the rate that it had been. And that sort of carries forward. And some of the out-years are even better than that. And so this is sort of a, a lull to work through. County revenue in, in the discussion for tonight and sort of a signal to the plan that, that the superintendent's working on possibly for your January board meeting, based on feedback tonight, we would be requesting almost $18 million from, from the county commissioners. And we'll get to what's in the plan and what, what realistically is the case there in a moment. But that would be ultimately the ask based on this discussion for tonight. There's about 800,000 in fund balance usage built in here. And then the, the category of other is largely interest and maybe a handful of other things. So a little bit of money on the grand scheme of the size of our budget to work with. So a total, at this, at this preliminary stage, a total increase in revenue projected at 27.4 million. At the state level, we'll now be in year three of the full blueprint formula. It looks like our enrollment continues to increase. Those numbers aren't, I guess, certified official by MSDE yet. But it looks like our enrollment officially will go up about three, just short of 300 students this September 30th, so the number they use to fund the future year. And while that's not the, sort of the dramatic bounce back numbers we saw post-pandemic, that's still a steady increase. And that's always a better position to be in than say the prior, prior decade or more where that number was going down and, and nothing good really comes with that, at least not from a budgeting standpoint. Again, we're using preliminary estimates. You know, the key date will be when the governor releases his budget early in the General Assembly. I think this year that number's January 17th, that date is January 17th or, or somewhere close to that. And we just spent a lot of time talking about the fact that in, in the blueprint timeline, fiscal '25 is, is unfortunately the smallest increase in the base per pupil. At the county level, county, as you know, builds a budget and a five-year operating plan to, to back up that budget or go, go with the budget that they adopt every year. In that five-year plan, there's a planned increase for the Board of Ed of 7.1 million. And so to get to the, the number of 17.9, that would be the initial request that the superintendent might build in. That would require a request from, from our friends across the street of an additional 10.8 million for fiscal '25. This slide and in your packet, the next slide sort of are tandem. And I'm going to try to just leave the numbers up and describe sort of the, you know, the, the little bit more detail that's on the next slide. So every household, every business, every organization has inflation every year, and, and we're no different. And so we're projecting almost $7 million in an inflationary impact on our budget. There's different drivers for that. The largest drivers tend to be employee fixed charges such as healthcare, retiree healthcare benefits. We've largely seen favorable rates, I would say, over time on our, on our healthcare increases, but there are increases on an annual basis. And so I'd say healthcare is kind of the biggest driver there. Blueprint requirements, there are places in even these early years of blueprint implementation where we know that we are trying to figure out what the right baseline should have been for certain programs, in some ways trying to catch that number and, and establish that baseline and build from it. Right now, in particular, in dual enrollment, our agreement with the community college on students taking dual enrollment courses and forecasting ahead a little bit on the new cost structure under AP courses, advanced placement courses that, that students will take. And maybe a tiny bit comparatively to those on the career counseling agreement with the Workforce Development Board. We're projecting from this year's actuals to date that we're going to be about $700,000 short in fiscal '24. So look forward to maybe a budget transfer at year end of this fiscal year. And so we're trying to build in that, that, that projected deficit of 700,000 into the FY '25 budget. I think there's a chance that in time, those numbers smooth. Certainly with more experience, you always get a better understanding of what we might, should, you know, what the target might be. But as Mr. Shockney and his team sort of work some definition into what the dual enrollment program would look like, once we see what the experience is under the new structure of advanced placement diploma courses in the blueprint, we, we should be able to refine that with time. Special ed, we're looking at about a $2 million issue in special ed. Historically, that, that has always been a part of our budget that we've had to try to chase a little bit. Special ed is driven a lot by federal law and service hours and programs related to each individual student's IEP. I will say this is a place where in the last three or four years, the blueprint has actually helped. As we phased in the blueprint, special ed was one of the ramp-up areas. But we still find ourselves looking at around a $2 million shortfall, particularly in contracted services or in the close adult supervision services for our students. Transportation, you approved the annual formula for transportation. Mr. Hardesty presented on the efficiency report the other day that had some glimpse at that formula. We're still building from the report that the joint committee with the bus contractors did a few years ago. And so just on those inflationary factors in that formula, we're looking at about a $400,000 to $500,000 increase there. And those drivers, as you talked about the other night, tend to be the cost of a new bus. Also inflationary impacts on the per mileage maintenance rate, driver salaries, et cetera. You might think, I did at least, that that number could be higher. Mr. Hardesty also spoke the other evening in his report about the number of buses we've continued to, to take off the road to try to assist with the driver shortage. And so that number is much lower than I might have anticipated in part because of, of a reflection like that.
So John, just, just a clarification. So I think in prior years, we, we had lumped like transportation inflation into the inflation number. But now that those, that's completely separate or there's still a transportation component of the inflationary impacts?
That is the transportation inflationary component.
Is the 400,000?
Yeah. After the committee met and you sort of made some great effort in the formula, we began pulling that out as its own item. And then those first couple of years, it was millions of dollars. Now we're sort of back to what, what would be more of an inflationary increase.
Okay.
Each year, if you incorporate prior year fund balance into your budget, then that's showing as revenue in the year and has to sort of be washed out in the next year. And so that's, that doesn't really reflect a negative or a, or a problem for you. But we had $6.4 million of, of fund balance in this operating budget that you had approved with your last May budget action. That, that will be gone. And so that, that shows that money being used or coming out of the budget. A very big ticket item, which is going to, I believe, require a multi-year solution. And Dr. McCabe has many of us in this room and not in this room working hard on trying to figure that out. Much like special education, technology, particularly the, the renewal of technology has always been an area of our budget that we have never fully funded. We've always chased, we've tried to use year-end money to do the annual refresh. So during the pandemic, as we moved to almost a one-to-one ratio of devices to students, that has created a structure that is, is now millions of dollars to address in terms of, of refreshing technology. So it was probably always a number where, I'm just roughly on, on average, I would say we probably moved in a million to a million and a half at year end to do the, kind of the traditional refresh of technology when we mostly had either laptop carts and/or devices for some staff. When you throw in, I think, I think Gary might say 19,000, I don't remember the exact number, of devices for students, suddenly the cost to, to replace those devices on a cycle aligned with warranty, it costs a lot of money. And so largely that's what's being reflected there. Mr. Davis and his team have come up with plans with many different options and, and different ways to approach it. One of the, one of the ways in which we're, I think we're at this point mostly interested in or has caught our attention would be a way to sort of take that group of devices and figure out a way to kind of incrementally address a portion of them. Not, not literally in an equal amount each year, but closer to an equal amount each year. And then that way we could plan for that budgetarily. But this number is reflective of that first year's efforts. And then lastly, subject to negotiations, and so we always refrain from too much specific discussion. We either have existing contracts, collective bargaining agreements with some of our employee groups or, or working on collective bargaining agreements with others. And there are some career ladder or at least blueprint elements, components to that. We're anticipating a need of $19.2 million in, in that realm. Any questions? These, again, these are companions, so these sort of spell that out, spell these numbers out a little differently. Any questions on there before?
I'd question about the technology piece. Technology, is that just for devices? Or can you give me like a percentage, like 90% of that's for devices? Are there any expended, expected costs for like improving safety in the schools and the camera systems? And is that all included in that?
That is the number mostly to deal with devices and perhaps the infrastructure to support devices, routers, switches, wires, that sort of thing. I'll, I'll look to see if Gary's in the room and if he wants to. He's not in the room. That number is largely driven by that influx of, of devices. And the fact that we were never fully funding it either, like with special ed and like with maintenance, facility maintenance is another area.
I know staff is already looking at this, but I'd really like us to do a hard look on, especially with the younger kids in the elementary K through two. Does every child need a laptop? You know, can we get by with carts? But it's just, we've really got to try to cut down on that cost.
We've begun some very preliminary discussions around just that. And you know, on its surface, you know, how are we using those, the devices now? You know, kind of their greater impact, is there a savings? And you know, we've been fortunate yet to have to use a, a virtual inclement weather day, but you know, that's a factor in all of this as well, too. So, but yes, that, that's very much a part of the, the preliminary discussions that are happening now.
Just also really concerned about the safety issues around the schools. You know, just with all the things happening around the country. But, but I know you all are focused on that, too. Thanks.
Yes, I would like to piggyback off that as well. I agree with you on the K to two. And you know, I know that it puts wrinkles in for, you know, the inclement weather policy. But I would think that, you know, we could find a way to make that work, right? Like, okay, if kids are going to be kids for, for K to two, you know, if they get an extra snow day versus, you know, the other folks having to log in. It seems like something that you, you might be able to ask the state for a waiver for, like specifically for just those three grades or something, if it, if it makes sense in the, the larger scheme of a, of a, of a bigger plan, right?
Right, right now, right now, when we have, when, if we say we're going to do a virtual day, the state has let us know that there needs to be a certain portion of the day spent in live instruction. So that would be the piece that, and that's the piece that we're looking at now is, you know, how could we get that done and not have devices for all of our K through two students? So we're brainstorming lots of ideas there. So we haven't made a decision, but we're going down all of the little pathways to see what might, what might be feasible.
Yeah, I appreciate that. You know, you think three out of the 13 grades, that's almost 25%. That's a million dollar savings. But we really need to look at those kinds of savings. Appreciate it.
Just in terms of the, the special ed, the, the $2 million for special ed, is that primarily positions?
It's.
The FTE?
Well, I'd say both. It's, it has, it reflects two things largely. It reflects a position group we call student support assistants or SSAs. Those are our employees who provide the one-to-one or close adult supervision to, to students who need those service hours. It also reflects contracted services, so related service providers.
Yeah, if you remember pre-pandemic, we worked very hard to reduce the number of contractors. And I'll, I'll ask Ms. Whittle to correct me if I'm wrong in any of this. We worked really hard to reduce our number of contractors, specifically in the area of, of speech and language pathology. Since the pandemic, the, the supply and the demand for, for those folks has grown. So we've had to transition backwards into requiring way more contracts or contractors than in the, than what we were able to, to work back from just because of the availability of, of, of speech pathology. That's just, that's an example, but a big one.
That's a big one. And, and it's not, we're not, we're going to, how should I say this? We're stretching to meet all of our needs as is. So this isn't a number that I see going down, at least not in, in the immediate future.
And even with the additional contractors, we are struggling to provide the required services as identified in individual IEPs.
And that's something we don't have a choice on. I mean, we have to provide.
Correct. And some very, very specific individual circumstances. We've, we've been required to owe compensatory services if, if necessary. And again, when, when those things happen, we work very directly closely with the family and are very upfront with them when we're having a challenge. But, but that's a, for the years, you know, if you remember back, those years, we worked very hard to reduce the number of contractors. Unfortunately, you know, they are in, you know, very high demand, even more so than they were pre-pandemic, which has just resulted in us using more contractors.
And I think numbers statewide are up and we're following those patterns. And, and these are areas that are affected just as much as anywhere by the staffing shortage that, that every county's facing. And so there's, there's a lot of hiring and rehiring going on here. I feel like Mrs. Herbert has a question.
Yes, when we talk about speech pathologists, when we look at their salary compared to the private sector, it's totally different. Okay. Again, it's just killing us.
Yes, they, they certainly can earn more in the private sector.
I just want to bring it up.
There aren't even enough speech pathologists to fill all of the positions in the private sector. So, so that's the situation we find ourselves in.
Oh, I have a question on, sorry, I have a question on the blueprint requirements. So in regards to the blueprint, do we see an increase in students taking dual enrollment in AP classes after these implementations were put in?
Yes.
All right.
Significantly.
Very much so.
And, and in the interim, we have not defined the early college pathway. We're in the process of, of working collaboratively to do that. I think that will define a pathway. Right now, we're covering the cost for all courses in which a student enrolls at the community college. Once we have that pathway established, that's, that's the pathway in which we will cover costs. But, but we're not, we're not quite there yet. So in time, the, you know, the spending might come back, but no doubt about it, significant increase in interest in, in dual enrollment in early college.
So if dual enrollment's up, is AP down?
It's, it's not so much that AP's down, it's that there are a series of post-college and career-ready pathways that need to be made available to students under the blueprint. One is dual enrollment, another is a, an option is an AP diploma program. And since we were already a school system delivering AP, that's the option we selected. But it's two things. So students now would need to sort of be encouraged to take, I think it's five courses from a limited menu to achieve their AP diploma. But more importantly, the Board of Ed pays all of the, all of the fees, the test costs, et cetera. And so in the grand scheme of that number, for some frame of reference, we're budgeted at a little over a million right now for these things in fiscal '24. We're anticipating hopefully that another 700,000 would bring us whole. The, the much larger percentage of that is dual enrollment than AP. Maybe a couple of hundred thousand on AP, maybe not even that one.
So do you feel that these students are going to eventually down the road, they're going to have to choose AP or dual enrollment?
Well, I.
That's what it, it seems like to me.
My, my best guess is depending upon what your outcome is, you're going to, you, you know, obviously you're going to select a pathway that aligns with your post-secondary goals. But I still envision, much like what we experienced with our students today, a student, for example, might, you know, really want to go down the road of CTE and, you know, enroll in a, in a CTE program, take nursing for example. But still want kind of those well-rounded experiences. So might also enroll in a, in an AP course, might also enroll in a, in a dual-enrolled course. So students will still pick their pathways, but they may still want to diversify in some of the other opportunities. Now, I do think depending upon what pathway you're going down, there might be more or less flexibility in time with that. If you're choosing the early college pathway, that's 60 credits. So there's a lot of work that will be backwards mapped. So it might allow less time for, to take a dual, you know, an AP course, for example. Or, you know, you, you won't be able to go down the road of, of early college most likely and a, and a, and a CTE program. But that's the whole concept is that we're getting kids connected with their post-secondary goals. And that's why we're backwards mapping, even do all the career exploration work that's going to happen and is happening in our, in our middle schools even. But, so in time, it could look different. I think we'll re-center a little bit more, but I do think we'll, we'll have kids, we'll have students clearly committing to a pathway. But I, I do always see that there might be a need for kind of a well, you know, a well. But I, I do always see that there might be a need for kind of a, a well, you know, a well, more of a, a diversified approach to that in the types of courses our students are selecting.
Yeah, from talking to students, I think it sounds like to me that they're going to either do one or the other and not a combination. That I, I just feel that, you know, with talking to students this day.
I think right now there's a fair bit of combination, right? But it sounds like this will push towards one, one direction or the other.
And that's why I brought that up. I think it's, 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 you're going to either do either or and not both. And that's sad.
And if you go back to your last business meeting, when Mr. Shagney presented on what the state's considering with the college and career-ready standard, it becomes very, very important that they get that right because there are state dollars attached to this, real, real dollars that maybe could close that void of funding.
I was just concerned.
Right now, I see a lot of students doing both and enjoying both. And I don't necessarily think that students are going to, in the future, choose one or the other because students end up taking AP classes and dual enrollment because it fits their interests in the future. So when they choose a dual enrollment class, it is most likely because it is not available in Carroll County. And that's usually just something to, in addition to what their interests are in the future. And it's not something that is done primarily as just, oh, I want to take a college class. Oh, I want to take this specific class that is geared towards my future career goals. Which is why I don't necessarily see students picking one or the other. Like currently, I see students doing AP classes geared towards their goals and dual enrollment geared toward their goals.
That's interesting because what I've been hearing, they're going to do one or the other and, and, and not do the in-between because a lot of times our schedules don't work. That's, and I know that from experience, uh, being in the school. I know trying to, to meet the needs of all these students in these classes and especially these, uh, smaller schools. It's, it's going to be very difficult.
And, and the pathway right now that we're most, you know, probably, probably the most familiar with is our CTE pathway. We've been doing that for a long time. And we have an end product that we work towards. So when a student enrolls to CTE program, they're, they're, you know, working for that industry certification most likely or that transcript.
And that's so important to these students.
At the end of the line. It'll be interesting as we, you know, in time, you know, as we implement the other pathways that end product of associate's degree or an AP diploma, you know, what, you know, if a student only gets halfway there or, you know, or doesn't, you know, or, or choose, you know, chooses to, you know, start to, to, to combine other pathways. You know, it's going to be difficult to see how that all unfolds and a lot of, a lot of those are unknowns right now.
Yeah, it is.
Because I think, I think for, you know, again, right now, CTE is the pathway that we're most, you know, that we know the most about. But, but a lot of times students can still take a CTE pathway and still diversify in either AP or a dual enrollment course. The question will be is can we still do that in time?
Ms. Pataglia.
I was going to ask, are we keeping track of, I mean, is there a way to even keep track of students that are taking advantage of having the dual enrollment? But then also enrolling into a, another institution for college? And if they're completing a degree with that, because it's like, I, I, yes, I want to make sure we're investing in our students. But I also want to make sure that they are completing what they wanted to do in the long run. Because another one, unfortunately, then it's a waste of money that's being spent. And I think that's, that's a big concern I hear from a lot of parents. Like, career in tech, yeah, a lot of them take career in tech because that's a trade that they can use out in the real world later in life or even right after they graduate high school. But while the dual enrollment push for college, are they really going and doing another institution after that? And then that's something that could be, I mean, unfortunately, money that's just kind of thrown aside.
Or even if the, those courses count for the university that they go to.
Transfer.
Yeah.
That's a big thing because I was telling you, you better get your AA degrees or everything transfers.
That's the thing. A lot of them don't, won't take that too. Like they'll backtrack like a later one. They'll, I'm sorry, we, we now changed the curriculum that we had, so we're not taking those anymore.
Yeah, time will tell what, what, what the impact this will have on our four-year colleges and universities. You know, will they, you know, transition to more two-year programs? Will there be more three-year? I think time will tell as to whether or not how that's all going to, how that will unfold. And, and again, obviously you're talking in-state versus out-of-state colleges and universities, very different there. So it'll be interesting to see how that unfolds in time.
I wouldn't necess, I wouldn't think that it would, it would mean that the class taken is not worth anything if it doesn't mean that they're going into that career because you're learning something no matter what class you take. I think that we, as, you know, me as a student, everyone as educators should understand that students are going to end up changing their minds in the future about career paths. I mean, I'm not sure about how careers have worked out in the Career and Tech Center. But at some point along the way, we can't always control what the career path that we go into will be despite the classes we take. Because in the end, people are going to take classes that they're interested in and not that they want to go in a career towards. And I think that in the end, we have to estimate whether or not we're okay with students doing things that they're interested in and things that will benefit them in their career.
By far, the most, the two, uh, courses with the highest dual enrollment is English and math, a hundred level English and math. So, you know, that's where the most student, and that, that makes sense because those are, are very transferable credits. You know, those are universal, um, you know, as part of that early college piece. So, um, you know, by far those, but, but there is tremendous diversity in the other courses that the students are taking.
Okay. Now for more news, um, even, even with this plan that we're working from tonight and including asking the commissioners for an, um, an additional seventeen point nine million or ten point eight above their plan number, there are some difficult choices that have already been made that are not included in, in sort of the plan we're discussing. We know that ultimately, under the blueprint, we have to phase towards the, uh, the teacher time requirements. And we have estimated, as, as our learning has evolved as to what those requirements might be, somewhere around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty FTE. We've, we've sort of been saying we'd like to incrementally add some per year to get ahead of that. There is nothing in this budget that would, um, that would work towards accomplishing that. We've done a good bit with pre-K expansion and phase-in and the space that we have. There's not anything in this budget beyond the, the, the expansion we've already discussed with you. And then largely that's because, you know, in most cases, we don't have the, the physical space to, to easily accommodate further expansion. There are several positions that we are carrying in our budget right now that are funded with external funding sources that relate back to, uh, either the pandemic federal, federal funds through the pandemic process or state funds to sort of kick off some, some early blueprint initiatives. That's the Maryland Leeds Grant. This budget plan does not include funding those positions into the future with local operating budget money. I, I don't foresee that that would mean we would be riffing employees or, or putting folks out of jobs in most of those cases. I, I do think that our natural attrition would accommodate those positions. It doesn't mean that these aren't folks who are doing very good work right now. They are. Um, and we'll look for ways to try to continue that work either, um, in other ways or through blueprint initiatives as they unfold. There might be some limited opportunities where some of the specific targeted or restricted funding streams under the blueprint, like the, the newer comp ed money we've received recently. Maybe we can, um, accommodate a few of the folks that way. So I don't think this leads to riffs, but it does lead to recognition that, um, realistically, we don't think we would have the revenue to continue these forward without something else going away from the prior expenditure list.
John, can you correct me if I'm wrong, but we were very specific when we hired those folks that these were not, uh, permanent positions, that these were temporary.
We were, or we tried to be. And we've tried to continue those conversations. And depending on, not so much tonight's work session, but maybe by the time we get to the January board meeting where the superintendent presents her budget or in that time period between that meeting and the February one where you adopt your budget request to the county, we'll, we'll then have some very specific conversations with folks based on what, what you desire. There, there's no other place that we know of to go for revenue, um, other, other than the commissioners. And so we made, we made the decision in planning with the superintendent to not make that request greater than seventeen point nine million. Although I think when I said that, I thought I heard Mr. Zaleski say, that's okay, I have that, but maybe I didn't hear that, but I thought I heard that. Probably not. But other than, in all seriousness, other than that, I, there's not another source unless our estimates at the state level turn out to be, um, off in a good way. And we won't really have a clearer glimpse of that until we get to the governor's budget release in mid-January. So.
And I, and I would just say one thing that makes this, um, a little more palatable to cut some of these ARP and S or positions that were intended to be temporary anyway in nature is the new compensatory education funding that we were able to hire staff for, for this year that we're in now. You know, we were able to hire some, some very similar positions as the ones that we're going to have to cut. So it, it makes it a little bit easier for some of our schools.
And that was one of the things I wanted to ask. Um, again, we hired quite a few, wasn't it over a hundred positions this past year? And also these folks that, um, will fall, they can apply for existing openings we have, instructional positions. Also, I really appreciate the staff looking at delaying the, um, additional hires for sixty forty planning. Because again, you, you know my concern, you know, we were just about over one percent of our staff being conditionally certified or not certified to this year being over five percent of the staff being uncertified. So us delaying hiring additional teachers to meet the sixty forty split will mean that we will keep that percentage low because parents want certified, fully certified teachers in their classrooms with their children. So I appreciate you delaying this and I'm sure our commissioners really appreciate it because this is an unbelievable cost when it comes to hiring new staff to meet the sixty forty split. So thank you.
And this is one of those, um, blueprint mandates that we are, are able to put off a little bit longer. We have a, a longer ramp up for that.
Our system infrastructure, these are areas along with special ed, some of them we've already mentioned. Historically, we have not been fully funded to where our actual operating costs are. Mr. Whistler, you asked about security earlier. It actually appears here now. It, it is what it is. Um, it's, it's been a byproduct of the years of reductions. We'll, we'll always continue to look at this and, and try to figure out when and where might be the right years to make some of these areas whole. We, we just haven't been able to get there yet. And we've tried to address it in different, I, I think, creative ways. The Board of Ed has been, you have been sort of funding some local CIP accounts, one called Infrastructure Renewal. The county continues to, um, to fund, uh, technology pretty consistently each year in the CIP. And so we're trying to balance our operational needs with what we can, um, supplement from the, um, from the local CIP projects as well. And that'll, that'll continue in this model of being our mode of operation. And then I, I won't spend a ton of time on it, but I do, I do want to edify the, the hard work that all of our departments and, and leaders of departments put into making their annual budget requests. There are many, many, not just wants, but, but true needs that folks would love to have, that have asked for sometimes for many, many years. Uh, unfortunately, none of those are in, in this budget plan that we're working on for tonight's work session in the January board.
And we have to look at security alone. And it took us several years to just get another person in, in that office up there. And, uh, we finally got it done, but it, it took us several years to do that. And only having a two-man team is, I don't know how they do it.
But they're doing an awesome job.
Yes, they are. But that's a, that's a prime example.
Okay. Typically at this operating budget, you'll ask or will, will forecast where we are with, uh, the board's fund balance. So as of the last audited number, uh, end of, uh, end of the prior fiscal year, you sit almost identically to where you were last year by coincidence. So you have thirteen point one million in, in the fund balance. That represents three point one percent of the overall operating budget. So you are very much right smack where you would want to be, hopefully in the middle of what your policy dictates, your policy based on, um, GSAB, um, sort of standards or recommendations. And so, you, you know, you're, you're, you're right in a good, healthy spot to perhaps deal with a, you know, a moderate emergency. You can't build a building or anything like that, but to deal with a moderate emergency. But not so much, I would hope that most reasonable people would think that, you know, that's not okay. And you've continued to use little bits of fund balance to address strategic bridges or one-time items that are, that are appropriate. There are a few possibilities as we move from, you know, as we move through this budget development process. Transportation, this isn't really new. When the, um, when the joint report from the joint committee came forward, one of the areas that the formula was to increase was the, uh, what's called the administrative allotment portion of, uh, of the reimbursement formula contractors. You embarked on a plan to phase that in over a series of years by backing up that amount with, um, with fund balance until we get to the end. So that continues forward next year. We have the Workforce Development Board agreement under, um, under the college career-ready aspect of the blueprint. I, I think we've talked about that over time. This is where part of the base per pupil, um, a certain amount goes to, uh, with, we use with the Workforce Development Board to expand career counseling down through the middle school ages. That number inflates year by year, um, for three years. So this would be year two coming up under the blueprint. That it's sixty-two dollars per every student that, that shifts to the Workforce Development Board. That number of sixty-two goes up with inflation each year. So there's the possibility of maybe bridging those costs, um, as well with fund balance, knowing that in three years it, it ceases to be under, under the blueprint law. And we've been working in partnership with them and some of the services are being provided in partnership with, um, Ms. Powell and her team by our employees in the school. So that, that still seems like a good, a good sort of pathway to, to get to the end product and not, um, not create too much of a funding cliff. We just, we've talked a lot about infrastructure. We, we, you know, depending on where some of those accounts sit, we might be back suggesting at year end, it might be appropriate to look at, at repopulating or growing some of those local CIP accounts to address those needs. And then lastly, we've had some conversations for a bit of time that seem to be moving forward a bit more rapidly with the, um, county staff about the possibility of acquiring a facility that we both jointly use at the moment. The Board of Ed or CCPS staff uses that facility for certain reasons and so does the county. There, there might be, you know, this is kind of just a tease, I guess, because we don't know. But we didn't want to not have this on your horizon and then it may say, oh, could we, could we look at some capital, some fund balance to address a capital need here? But there's the possibility of, um, of perhaps a facility acquisition in the spring.
And that would be Kessler. Kessler, the Kessler Building.
So John, but before you go off of that slide, um, so I mean, fund balance is primarily intended to be, you know, one-time uses of money if there's a specific use of that that's meant to be one-time. We've, we've done a couple of situations where we've funded not one-time money because of the situation that we're in. But just trying to understand, you said that the, the, the fund balance at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three was thirteen point one million. Is that before or after the, the six, on the, where we said we use the prior year fund balance of six point four million that we now have to back fund in the?
The six point four is not in that unassigned number.
It's already out of the thirteen point one.
Correct. Once you designate or allocate or assign, I always get the technical terms from Drew. Once you assign, um, a use to a portion of fund balance, then, then that becomes accounted for that way. This is your unassigned fund balance. This does not include the six point four. This is beyond the six point four.
Okay. So the, the point eight million, which, I'm not sure which slide it was on, hold on a second. Oh, it was the very first slide where you said fund balance use was eight hundred thousand. Is that, is that the ongoing commitment that we have?
That's these things on the screen right now.
Those things right now? So that's just the eight hundred thousand?
We would.
Okay.
And it could, you know, it could shift depending on your conversations tonight or as we move through the budget process with you, with the superintendent and you together. But we're, we're looking at a, a usage of, of eight hundred thousand for next year at this stage. That, that would not include the last bullet here, by the way.
Okay, okay. That's, that's what I was wondering because I was thinking that that would certainly push it over the, the eight hundred thousand.
It very much would.
Okay.
And I would say that that last bullet would truly be a one-time use. I think most reasonable people would say that. The, um, infrastructure, CIP projects, at this point, that is our mode of operation. And so that is, those are annual one-time uses barring having that money restored to the operating budget. The first two are probably technically not in my mind and probably most people's minds. But the Board of Ed has done some strategic things where we've, where you've said if it's a, if it's a bridge to get to a finite end and you can account for that and there's no real commitment beyond that. no real commitment beyond that, then, then we'll be okay with that in those instances. And I think you've been judicious about those, and they've led to good things. These are two of those areas. I think this would be year four of the transportation. Yes, Mike is nodding. This would be year four of the transportation progression on the administrative allotment. So that would almost be, be off of the books, so to speak. And Workforce Development Board is one of those sort of weird aspects of the blueprint that it's in the early years and not beyond that. And I, I mean, I feel like we've tried to work real hard here and then with commissioners in our discussions to say, we don't want either of us to be left holding a bag at the end of this three, three-year window. We're trying to figure this out in a way that makes the most sense. And I think they've partnered with us to try to, to try to do that and be reasonable about it.
I know in prior years I've, I've asked you, and I know it's not completely fair, but to kind of say, okay, if the fund balance, the unassigned fund balance is thirteen point one million dollars as of twenty twenty-three, to kind of project where we think that's going to be as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, that makes accountants very nervous.
And, and, and I always put the caveat out that I don't hold you to it, but just trying to understand, you know, do we expect that thirteen point one million to change dramatically given any of the, any of the decisions that we're making?
And I would say, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm neither the accountant nor the budget officer, and they probably grimace when I speak, but I would say that depending on that last bullet about facility acquisition, if it were a typical year, we, we cannot legally overspend our budget. We just can't do that. And so if we did, you'd be using fund balance for that at best. So you have to try to plan your year to conclude in a manner where you don't overexpend. You have to adjust for, within categories where one category might need to be helped by another just to round out that year. But because of that approach, which I think is the legal and, and, you know, the correct approach, you would always anticipate maybe, you know, a percentage or two or three in a given year would, would be in year-end surplus. And then you figure out, okay, what, what do we need to fortify in one category? Maybe diesel went up a lot one year, or, or something like an example. But anything that's left rolls by your joint agreement with the commissioners to fund balance. And so I'd always anticipate maybe a, a percent, and then if you have in one particular year some larger-than-normal use of fund balance, maybe a facility acquisition, then that might wash out to be still thirteen point one in that year. We've tried to keep that number safely around there. And if it, and if it were to grow too much, we've come to you in different ways to say, hey, maybe it's time to look at some other uses. And we've even, and I'm going back over a period of years, but we've even done some creative things in employee negotiations to find appropriate one-time ways to, to use that fund. So we try to at least alert you so that you might manage it in a, in a way that you feel effective. But as long as we're staying around the three percent range, we feel like that's a good, a good, comfortable, prudent place to be. And if you ever feel differently, you'll let us know that, and we'll adjust accordingly.
Right. I mean, I, I'm comfortable with that thirteen point one million. What I just wanted to make sure was, you know, we were talking about the six point four million from the previous year. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't expecting that number to dramatically change.
That would have been expended in this budget, and so what showed as revenue will now show as washing out as, you know, not as an expenditure for the future.
Okay.
And then that leads us lastly to the process. So this is the work session, so this is your opportunity to discuss these things as you have, to offer any feedback either tonight or in follow-up to the superintendent to inform what she will bring to you as a recommended budget at your business meeting in January, which is on the tenth. Then that gets released to the public and, and, and to, to all of the parties, and there'll be a work sess, or yeah, I'm sorry, a public hearing on the budget on January thirty-first, followed immediately by a work session of the board to discuss any other ideas you've had, any other thoughts that have formed, any feedback that the public has offered at the hearing or in writing or email that you'd like to respond to. And then we will take that entire process and all of that feedback and discussions with you. And the superintendent will bring you what she believes is the budget you're looking for to become your request to the county at the, at your business meeting in February, which is the fourteenth. And then in between that key date of January seventeenth is when the, the governor is by constitution required to submit his budget into the General Assembly. And that, that helps clear up the picture a good bit.
The one thing I am going to ask is that we need to send our budget over in that notebook form that we did to the commissioners last year, and that there weren't any questions about what we were, what our expenditures were, and it was all clear and concise, and I think that really helped. So that's the one thing I'm going to ask, that we continue to do that. I know Mr. Kyler recommended that, and I think that really helped because then it's, it's all there. It's very transparent of every dollar we spend. So Ms. Sevigny.
I, I completely agree with that. And in the spirit of, like, my, my primary comment is I'm a little concerned in the next steps that we don't have a meeting with the commissioners, right? They've, they've really been partners with us during all of this discussion of blueprint and like, trying, work with them to try to make sure we both understand the implications, what the dollar amounts are that we're talking about. And we're potentially putting forth a proposed budget right now on a county request without getting their feedback first, right? Like, we're this, this nineteen point two million dol, like, so we're basically asking for ten point eight million more than what they currently have in the budget. And if I, if, if I remember correctly, I think the commissioners may already have a hole next year, even with the, the seven point one that they've allocated us. So to the, so to go in and say we're requesting the ten point eight before really having a, a heart-to-heart discussion with them, I feel like we're, we're pitting ourselves potentially to, to have very confrontational discussions. Like, I really just want to make sure that we have that discussion with them, understand where they sit, that they understand what flexibility might exist in blueprint for the upcoming year, just so that we keep this on a partnership level because it's worked so well for us in the past. I don't, I don't want to put something out there that they go, whoa.
Sure.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes total sense. And.
When do we have our next meeting with them? What, when is it scheduled? I'm trying to look at it now.
Yeah.
I thought it was February.
But you know, we had looked at a date in December to meet with them, and it certainly would have been, you know, prime opportunity to share. But I don't think it worked out with them.
Right.
No, it didn't. Yeah, it, it, it didn't work out for everybody.
On January tenth at our regular business meeting, you know, we normally have a, you know, a sitting commissioner attend that meeting. So we can work to make sure that a commissioner is able to attend on January tenth. And then I think the, the time to have more of that in-depth conversation is at the January thirty-first work session, just like this work session. And we can certainly invite the commissioners to come over for that, for that work session with us. And we'll see how many are available to come and, and participate in that because I agree, I think, you know, having them, inviting them and have them, having them be part of the conversation as we, as we move forward is imperative.
Right. And if we're, if we're putting forth a request and then asking them to fund it, and then we have additional discussions, like, so we run the risk of making them look like the bad guys if they can't get there, right? And that's, that's what I want to, I want to avoid. Like, I want this to be a true partnership, right? So maybe if we can caveat it saying, this is our request, given our best understanding of the blueprint, but we really want to work with you guys to, to try to figure this out.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And I was thinking along those lines, too, that sometimes it is helpful to indicate what are some other items that we certainly like to have or need to have, but we have not included in the budget. And I know we have them sort of lumped under other system requests.
I have joint meeting on, we have a joint meeting coming up.
Oh, we do, on the tenth?
Yeah, that's what I, that was my point, was one's the next one, and yes, we do have it. So it's, yeah, I thought it was there before we did our budget because we wanted to be clear.
Okay.
And include them.
So we do quarterly.
Yes, I knew it was coming.
One, one P M. that day.
Yeah, right. So we're, we're in good shape. That's perfect.
Okay, great.
That is, yes, I thought we had one coming up. That's why I asked.
I thought we did, too, but I thought it was later.
I knew they couldn't meet in, it all didn't work out in December. Well, it's just, that's December. But no, this is great.
Okay, yeah, we probably want to just include.
Yeah, we need to include that in there then, the next time. Yep.
The commissioners are hosting.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, that's great.
Would you like me to update that bullet as we publish this?
Yes, please do.
Okay.
Yeah, again, I really appreciate the work by staff, and I know many teachers probably aren't listening because they're working hard right now, but we really need everyone to take a look at how we can cut costs because when you tee this up in respect to the state budget, the county budget, asking the commissioners to fork over another ten or eleven million dollars, it's going to be a really tough, tough, tough thing for them. And little things like the computer issues, you know, K through twelve, can we use carts used for multiple classes instead of each kid getting a computer? Or maybe even expanding that to K through five? Or, you know, if we're doing a phased-in tech refresh, you know, we push a little bit of that off to the next year, but we've really got to come down on that ten million, eleven million dollar request to the commissioners. It's just, it's going to be really tough for them to come up with that kind of money. And in this environment, we just can't see a whole lot of revenue increases for them in this inflationary times, and taxpayers just can't fork over more money. So again, all hands on deck. Look where we can get cost savings. Look where we can tighten our belts a little bit more because everyone in the entire state's going to tighten their belt. But thanks again for everything you've done in this budget.
And I think that's some of what they've done. Because again, these other, other system requests, we're not even listing those out or including those.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure it's, again, items that staff actually felt that they really would need. So sometimes it's good just to sort of, if you can't give us a laundry list, just to maybe put something down so we can see what some of those requests were. And I hear what you're saying about the technology, Mr. Whistler, but again, I know, you know, it's really just a part of the instructional program at this point, and especially with our grade levels that are tested with the state testing, they need to have.
That's true about that.
Yeah, and I would love.
Ability to go through technology and to be able to use it appropriately to respond.
Yeah. And I would love to hear the impact that, that would have if we did that. I would love to hear from our K through five teachers to say, look, if you took this away, this is what would happen. It's really important we hear that.
I do remember our students had a very difficult time taking those tests on the computer that did not have a computer. And I know that was a big, that was a big part of it. So, and they, third grades where it all starts happening.
Yeah, I think I remember it was like, they were struggling a lot. Like, they're supposed to do testing on specific days, and they were struggling a lot because they didn't have enough for those kids.
Didn't know how to open up their.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think, you know, any educator would, would tell you that good pedagogy says that you don't assess a student in a way that they're not instructed.
Right.
And so as long as the state testing is in a digital format, we would need to make sure that the, the grade levels that are going to be tested that way are instructed that way.
That makes a good sense.
One of my concerns, too, is if we start taking away the technology from students on one-on-ones, we're not going to be able to have the virtual snow days, and we're going to have to extend the school year. And we hear from the public around calendar time, they are very vocal, they don't want the school year extended. Teachers don't want the school year extended. So I think it's something we need to, I mean, we're in the technology world, you know? I mean, yes, I mean, I think during COVID, it was, it was a very difficult time, but as our kids are getting older and education is changing and technology is changing, I mean, it is good for kindergartners to learn how to do certain things on a computer. Still learning how to write, but they still still need to learn certain technological skills. So, yeah, that's one thing I'm.
But Mr. Whistler, I do understand where you're coming from. I don't know all the way up to fifth because I know they get tested starting at third. So that's a, that's a, that's a, we got to start there, but we have to look.
Can't wait to third grade to teach them.
Yeah, right, yeah, unfortunately. But, yeah, we are going to have to look at budgets, budget cuts all the way.
Yeah, and Pat, I completely agree with you about laying out all of the, you know, what are the, the other system requirements that we're foregoing, right? So that we kind of understand, like, okay, these are decisions that have kind of already been made, right? But laying them out explicitly, and, but I think in, along the same lines as the technology, it's like, okay, well, let's, we can at least talk about the things that we're thinking, okay, even if we don't go this route, right? Like, if we decide that the, you know, not having devices as a one-to-one for K to two is a good way to go, or if we decide that we can't do that, you can, you can at least put it down there as these are the ideas that we've discussed and discarded as not something we think we can live with, right? Like, but we just need to explicitly have them out there so that folks realize how we're attempting to get there, right?
Yeah, this is not going to be easy. But people are going to know, want to know what we have cut and what we plan on doing then in the years following. Are we going to try to bring things back?
Right. And one of the other things that we discarded last year, I think, was the transporting folks within a, a mile of their residence. Like, it didn't, there was, you know, we had talked about potentially changing some of the bus routes and transportation zones, and we basically, and changing bell times and, and everything else, and we said, no, we're, that's too much disruption to the school system at the same time as all this other stuff is going on. So I think.
We have to have these conversations. We have to because you just make, and that, alls I think of is when I have students walking, I worry about safety, and I know what other counties have done and, and extended their distances, and that is a scary thought. And things have gone south since they've changed their distances. So safety first, yeah. And, and we have, and then we've got to look elsewhere.
Right.
But we will get through it. We always have, and we are going to have to make some hard decisions. Anything else for the good of the order? I thank you.
Okay, I, I did just want to ask about, you know, we had talked last, at the board meeting last week about the blueprint having some additional flexibility in it going forward. Is there any part of the, you know, nineteen point two million or the, not, not the nineteen point two million, the, the total amount, what is it, twenty-seven point four million, that there's any flexibility in, from, from a blueprint requirements perspective? Because, you know, once we kind of set that baseline, we had said last week that the, the baseline for twenty twenty-five is where they're going to kind of measure us from, for compliance moving forward. So is like, if, if there is some flexibility there that we don't take advantage of, it makes it that much harder down the road. So just trying to understand if there's any, any room in here.
It's made that, it's made that number that's the ask much, much lower. And so at the end of the prior year's budget session, one day, the commissioners call it, I believe Mr. Kyler specifically told me to jog over and try to give them a, you know, a reasonable forecast as to what we were, what we were seeing as blueprint, you know, increased costs specific to the blueprint. And the number that we handed them was somewhere around seventy-eight million. And that included.
Sixty, forty.
It included believing that we might have to rearrange the structure of our schools to comply with the funding patterns all in one year. That was somewhere around thirty-seven, thirty-seven million. So that became off, off the table for now. And we have, we have much good reason to believe that, you know, those kind of requirements we'll be, we'll be working on in a phased approach over time. The AIB has developed a, a somewhat phased approach to the career ladder, which mitigates some of the costs associated with employee salaries in a given year. It doesn't defer them forever, but it, it, it looks like they're dealing with the career ladder in kind of a, we'd like to see your career ladder this, well, they wouldn't like to see our career ladder. We have to let them see our career ladder this spring or summer, but you might have the opportunity to phase into that career ladder over years as opposed to it being in place and active on July first. So there's some things like that where that flexibility has driven down the early estimates, that's kind of made the number lower than what we were showing them in the spring. Things like that. Did you have other?
No, I think you covered it.
Yeah, I think one other thing to take away, and you said this earlier, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to get less money next year from the state, correct?
We'll get, we're getting, yes, in twenty-five?
Less money. So if you, if you undercut this year, you're just making the rubber band snap back that much faster next budget for the, for the next year.
And I know you know, but just so that everyone understands who might watch this, not less money than in twenty-four, just less of an annual increase than we saw in twenty-three, twenty-four. And then by twenty-six, that, that annual increase from the state seems to get back on a pattern closer to twenty-three and twenty-four.
So if we shortchange too much, it may be a really big number the following year. So just, it's a really delicate rope to walk from here on out.
Well, I thank everyone for all their hard work, and we will see everybody back here on January tenth. And Mr. O'Neil will add that other date, and I'm so glad. I knew, I thought we had a commissioners meeting coming up. And happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.